Okay, it's slightly more complicated, but we have all of the city council candidates are up here. So we have two candidates each for Ward 1 and Ward 3, and everybody else, you're the candidate for Council at Large. So for candidate for Ward 1, we have Thomas Hunt, who is incumbent, and Lisa Havman. And Ward 3, we have Michael O'Donnell and Jean Gallagher. And then for Council at Large, we have David Furrie, who is not a candidate either tonight, but I have a statement to read. Brian Cindelar, who is not incumbent, but is running. Christina Morris, who is an incumbent. Stacy Schrantz Reed. Katie Timmons. And Anjanet Arabian Whitman. Okay, so each of you gets the opportunity to make a two-minute statement. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to get Mr. Furrie out of the way because he's not here. And let him read from there. Okay, David Furrie says, first of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate's night. I apologize for missing this informative night as my sister came home from Colorado and have not seen her since the pandemic started. And she has some special plans that we can do with tonight. My name is David W. Furrie, and I am seeking reelection for my eighth term as an at-large candidate for Rocky River City Council. I currently chair the Environment Committee and also serve on the Contracts, Parks, Rec, and Health and the Buildings Equipment and Technology Committees. Prior to being elected, I also served on the Planning Commission for two years. I am a past president of the Rocky River Chamber, currently serving on their Centennial Celebration Committee, past president of the Rocky River Education Foundation, and was humble when they named me as an honorary trustee. I also currently serve as director for the Rocky River Campus Foundation. I am past nation's chief and head man for the West Shore Indian Dines and was also very active in youth coaching for rec sports and Rocky River Little League. As in the past, I've always been committed to the city and like to live with the pay-forward motto by helping out with numerous Rocky River organizations with what I call the three Ts: time, talents, and treasures. I've lived here for basically all of my life and graduated from Rocky River High School in 1982. When my wife and I started our title agency nearly 26 years ago after being married less than a year, we chose Rocky River and have always had our business in Rocky River. In fact, the third of our 15 employees are residents of the 44116. Rocky River has been very fortunate historically to have proactive administration and council to guide the city through whatever challenges arise. You need trusted, experienced, and dedicated councils to guide through both good and bad times. We have a fiduciary responsibility to balance both the city's best interests and the residents' best interests. And that's all the way up on board from Furrie. Okay, so let's go to the candidates for Ward 1. Lisa Havman, you're in Ward 1 first.
You guys can... Over the years, I've served the community in many ways, teaching PSR, seeing Christopher as a Girl Scout leader, empowering young girls at the Food Pantry and countless school events. So some of you may recognize me. My name is Lisa Havman, and I'm running for City Council in Ward 1 of Rocky River. The City Council is one more way that I would like to serve our work community. So many of our council members have been appointed or run largely under those for many years. And I think that that lack of competition makes them unresponsive and without incentive to allow the residents to hear their concerns and address them. In contrast, during this election season, I've been going around and trying to knock on every door so that I can meet everybody and hear what they're concerned about, so I can adequately represent the entire ward. I would make the pledge to continue to be excessive, accessible, and responsive. As a civil and environmental engineer, I bring a unique skill set to the City Council. I would strive to manage our citywide infrastructure using the skills that I have and also promote frankly fiscally responsible sustainability initiatives. In May, I attended a By Harston, Ohio Clean Energy Summit, and I was really impressed with the things that other cities are doing. And I believe that our city could do some of those things as well, like taking the Ohio 30x30 pledge to reduce our carbon footprint 30% by the year 2030. As an engineer and an active community member, I have the skills needed to design solutions to reach our common goals and to build bridges across the many perspectives in Rocky River. Voters should have a choice to elect a qualified candidate who is successful and shares their core values, and I am that choice.
Thank you.
Thank you all for voting.
Thank you. And Mr. Hunt?
Thank you. Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Good evening to all. For those that do not know me, I am Tom Hunt. I am the incumbent sitting council representative for Ward 1. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this event tonight. Let me provide some background in this short period of time. I have lived in Rocky River. In fact, I've lived in Rocky River's Ward 1 for 45 of my 51 years. My wife Tammy also grew up in Rocky River on Vine Court. As a child, I lived on Homeland and then Erie Road. My wife and I and our three children have lived on Willows Bay Lane now for the last 20 years. We love our street, we love our neighborhood, and we love the Rocky River community. We have so much to be excited about and proud of as residents of Rocky River, not least of which is being celebrated as Cleveland Magazine's number-one rated suburb in Northeast Ohio. Being part of the team at City Hall that has worked to garner such recognition has been a distinct honor. And I am very grateful for the opportunity to have served for 15 years. Over those years, I served the community and volunteered in many other ways, civic organizations, causes. I'm a former Rock River Little League baseball coach, recreation basketball coach, tribal baseball, and tribal basketball coach, volunteer at St. Chris Parish, and I coached sports there as well. I participated in volunteer beach cleanups at Bradstreet Landing and Rock River Park with my sports teams in the past. And I helped pick invasive weeds at Elm Park with those kids, teaching them to serve. I'm proud of also participating in community challenge events, Chamber of Congress events, sponsoring causes for the Parks and Recreation and Foundation, and attended multiple police department dinner graduations for the youth of our community. To say that I invested in the goodwill and community of Rocky River would be an understatement. Mayor Bobstopp talks about how the true measure of the success of our community can be found in the successes of our young people.
We have to ask you to stop. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. So there you have the two candidates for Ward 1. One of them will be elected for a two-year term. And now we have candidates for Ward 3. Michael O'Donnell, incumbent, and Jean Gallagher. Ms. Gallagher, why don't you go first?
Good evening. My name is Jean Gallagher, and I'm running for Ward 3 of City Council. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, members of the audience, for being engaged. And I also want to recognize all of the candidates here this evening. It's not an easy task running Rock River, and I want you all to know how much I respect each and every one of you. Growing up, my visits to Rocky River consisted of three nights a week speed skating at the ice rink. Yes, sadly, I'm old enough to remember those years skating outdoors, which was probably right here where we are today. High school summers were spent sunning and swimming on the rocks at Oakwood Beach. It's now called Oak Beach. Rocky River has always been a community that I loved, and I was lucky to have become a homeowner here in 1996. We also own rental property here, my husband and I. My two daughters have only known Rocky River as home. Rocky River Schools did a great job to help them shape into the wonderful, strong, independent women they are today. I'm a member of St. Christopher and St. Patrick Church on Bridge. My husband is a CYO basketball coach and a well-deserved member of the CYO Hall of Fame. My responsibility, should I be elected, is to lead and represent my community. I welcome the opportunity to engage with and encourage participation in decision-making by my Ward 3 neighbors. My ideas will be shared, and I hope their ideas will be shared with me as well. I spent 25 years representing members of the textile and laundry industry and was the first and only woman to be elected to the office of President and Secretary of Treasure. The past 11 years, I've been in public service working for the Juvenile Court and the 8th District Court of Appeals, respectively. My dual membership as a private sector and public sector employee has taught me the importance of being fiscally responsible. Taxpayer money is my money, and I treat every expense and procurement as if it were coming from my own wallet. As a taxpayer, every decision I make will be one that's researched and cross-checked. I'm prepared and responsible for our court's $1 million operating budget.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. And Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting the event. For those who don't know me, my name is Michael O'Donnell, and I'm a current Board Member. I've lived in Rocky River for over 35 years. I grew up here, graduated from the high school, and my wife and I bought our first home here in the early 2000s after I graduated from law school. We're now raising our three children here, all of whom are in the Rocky River City School District. In terms of my qualifications for office, I'm a trial lawyer for the lawsuit of Austin Dowell and I'm a practicing lawyer in business litigation, complex commercial litigation for the last 17 years. I'm a former chair of our litigation group. In terms of my experience on council, I've been elected by the residents in Ward 3 on five different occasions. Four of them, I've been in contested races. In the last four years, I've been on various different boards and commissions within our council. For the last four years, I've had the opportunity to be the chairman of our Finance Committee. And it has been a wonderful opportunity to work with the mayor and administration of the budgets, particularly over the last four years. I suppose the question I get asked most frequently is, why do you want to continue to be on City Council? And for me, the answer is fairly simple. It's about the residents. There isn't a week, a day, a couple days that go by that I don't get an email, a phone call, a text message about a tree laundry that needs to be trimmed, a road that needs to be paved, a house maintenance issue, what have you. In fact, I see the mayor sitting back there. The mayor and I had one the other day. A neighbor was just concerned about another neighbor in case there was an incident with the fire department, police department. She just wanted everybody in the city to be aware that this neighbor might need some extra attention. So I look forward and relish the opportunity to work with the residents. Recently, I was endorsed by the mayor in this race. And in her endorsement, the mayor wrote that O'Donnell's responsiveness to the residents in Ward 3 has been outstanding. So you know, you work hard every week, every day to do the right thing, but it's nice when one of your colleagues recognizes you. So thank you.
Thank you. And then we have, okay, again, one of these two that you just heard from, you will vote for, for a two-year term. Now, we have candidates for Council at Large. And how many did they vote for? Two? Three? Three. Three members of Council at Large. So we have five people. That makes your choice a little easier. We heard from David Furrie already. We have Brian Cindelar, Christina Morris, Stacy Schrantz Reed, Katie Timmons, and Anjanet Arabian Whitman. And why don't we just go down the line here from Ms. Morris? Is it okay? Thank you.
Hello, hello. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Hi, I'm Christina Morris, and I'm running for reelection for City Council at Large. It's been my privilege and honor to serve the city the past two years. I've said it before, but as a transplant coming from a place without the excellence in city services, I appreciate and treasure our city. The past two years have been a wonderful education in what it takes to run a city. I've enjoyed the weekly meetings, in particular, the mayor's reports. I've become a Cuyahoga County Recycling Ambassador and completed a class on Ohio Ethics Law. But my most valuable training has been that I've been chaired the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee. Sitting in on planning, architectural review, and VZA meetings these past few years has been eye-opening. We have some wonderful and professional board members and city personnel ensuring that the city ideals are preserved while taking our city forward and modernizing. My hope is that we can also bring in more green initiatives so that in our modernization, we are considerate of the health of our planet and the people on it. By green initiatives, I'd like to see more electric vehicles in our fleet, solar panels on the service garage, more charging stations, and maybe a Tesla police vehicle. I bet the chief would love that. And of course, more trees. I realize these choices aren't cheap. Infrastructure isn't cheap. I hope, like with other city projects, that we can find resources to help to free the costs. I'm committed to helping find grants and ways to pay for these projects so they aren't a burden on the city, but they're an asset and an ongoing source of pride that attract new residents. As always, I welcome your phone calls, emails, and place great value on my relationship with residents. Do not hesitate to call about anything. If it has to do with the city, I can and will help find the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cindelar?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for fabulous every two years. It's very much appreciated. It gives us a chance in front of people to feel their questions when they may not feel comfortable approaching you or calling you. And I know this because I'm a past three-term councilman. I was the shortcomer of my 30 votes previously when Christina came on. So I know what it takes to be on council. I've lived here for 15 years with my wife and our three children. I'm an attorney for a career that I've focused my career on school, municipal, public, and corporate law. I currently work for the Ohio Lottery. I don't have the numbers. I will tell you, though, next to my family, I dedicate my life 100% to Rocky River. And that's actually one of the things that my wife and I talked about while we were dating. It was kind of interesting that that was the choice. And it was all due in part to education because she is a teacher. Much like Mr. Furrie, like I said, I give my life to the city. I'm an honorary trustee and past president of the Education Foundation. I currently volunteer my time with the Curriculum Board for the school system. I'm on the Finance Council for Rocky River Parish. And I'm a past member of the Civil Service Commission. So again, I'm also a sports coach, too. If there's a call to action and someone needs a volunteer to step up, I'm always there unless it conflicts with something my kids do. But to let you know where my heart lies for this, I love my daughter. Her freshman year, she made the varsity team, and her first playoff game is tonight outside the Browns' two-and-up here. I do love this city. You know, I plead red like everyone else, but to me, it's maroon. It always looks beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Cindelar. And thank you for your devotion to the city. As I should say, everyone here obviously feels the devotion to this city, and that's why they're ready to serve. Ms. Schrantz Reed? Am I sorry that I missed someone? Katie Timmons. Okay. Sorry, Katie Timmons. Are you ready to speak?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Why am I running? I want to talk about that. Number one, I was passed, which was a great honor by the Democratic Party. And I am endorsed by the county Democrats, and I'm on the executive committee with them. So I'm a very proud Democrat. What do I bring? Well, I'm not a lawyer, and I think that's a good thing. I've been in nonprofit work with Loser &amp; Social Services. I've worked for battered women. I then spent 20 years doing research. I was on the Medical Expenditure Panel Survey. It's called MEPS. I encourage you to look it up because it brought Medicare Part D to us and many, many other important things, including help for children's illnesses. And currently, I also do sales and customer service because really, I love people. I'm a people person, and I'm a relationship builder, and I feel that will be a great benefit to the city. I have called the councilman before, and he did call me, but he never called me back. And I solved my own water, street line problem myself. So I'm going to be there for you. I'm going to listen to you, and I'm going to follow up on your issues further than just one phone call. If you want my number after today, you are welcome to have it. I also wanted to say that I would like to meet with constituents often. And I admire my friend Christina for doing that. I'm always surprised by how few people in the city know who their councilmen are. And I think some of these gentlemen who've spent years doing this, I'm sure their intentions are good, but I don't think it handles up. So I hope you will consider a woman and bring some diversity with the city, another one, and some fresh ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. And now, Ms. Schrantz Reed?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stacy Schrantz Reed, and I'm running for Rocky River City Council, Council at Large. I've been saying that over and over for the last six months, so it's just part of the mush dick. I am here to listen and to act for the good people of Rocky River. My goal is to preserve as well as to enhance our community. Bringing diversity to our council is important to me as a citizen. I would like to see our city's true demographics represented. 54% of our population are women. That equates to four of the seven council seats. That should be occupied by women. Currently, we have one. I would also like to see diversity of professions. There are currently four attorneys on City Council, and two more are running. When you're able to diversify the perspective, you're able to shift the culture and reshape that conversation. I am part of the fabulous women running for Rocky River City Council, and I have been endorsed by the Rocky River Democratic Club and the Cuyahoga County Democratic Club Democratic Party. I have also been endorsed by the AFL-CIO, the Cleveland Stonewall Democrats, Monique Smith, the Cuyahoga Democratic Women Caucus, the Matiards, and the UAW. That's two unions, the LGBTQIA community, a state House Rep, and two major women's organizations. These organizations have kept me running. I worked hard to earn their endorsements. They believe in me. I'm working just as hard, if not harder, to earn the citizens of Rocky River's endorsement on November 2nd. I've worked in consumer products for 30 years as a sales and marketing executive. Building businesses is my core competency. I'm also a champion for women in the workplace. I'm currently the vice president of sales for a large home decor company. I'm also part-owner of the Cleveland Ketchup Company. And in my spare time, I am president of the Board of Directors for the Women's Recovery Center.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And now, Ms. Arabian Whitman?
Thank you. Hello, Rocky River. First, a sincere thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this wonderful event. You have a very special place in my heart. As I transitioned from law school into my legal career, I did work for the League of Women Voters. So we are a wonderful organization to work with. I am a lifelong resident of Rocky River, and over three decades worth of community activism has come from me. At the age of 16, I helped to secure the stadium lights at Rocky River High School. I set up a meeting with Earl Martin. He was the mayor at the time. And I sat down with him and discussed with him as a 16-year-old to the mayor why stadium lights would be a great asset to the community. I also attended the Planning Commission meeting. It was a packed house, and I stood up with my letterman jacket to discuss in public again why stadium lights would be an amazing benefit to the community. Now, who knew that in a short time I would be appointed to the Planning Commission? I would also be elected to City Council. And I'm very excited for that because what I did while I was in those capacities, I helped plan the budget. I helped implement the budget. I helped draft the city's master plan and implement that, pass ordinances so that the city can run on an everyday basis. I went above and beyond to serve as an initiative for the Rocky River community by serving with the Rocky River Healthy Rocky River Program. I go above and beyond, not just what is expected of me, but what needs to be done for the city. I look forward, my goal is to use my attorney skills and my administrative skills to serve every segment of this population, not just one. I am a citizen for all citizens. I am Anjanet Arabian Whitman, and I look forward to being your next Rocky River City Councilperson at large. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've been asked here to have all of you running for Council at Large to repeat your names because people in the back of the room cannot read them. But right now, I have a very short question, which basically goes to the non-incumbents, those who are running for the board. And we'll let the incumbents answer to it then. In the past two years, those of you who are not board members, how many City Council meetings have you attended? And let's start with Ms. Schrantz Reed.
I started attending the City Council meetings via Zoom in January, and then recently in person. So probably at least a dozen City Council meetings this past year.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
I would say probably just two to three. I started work with Vitale senior residences as their Director of Senior Living, and I was very busy with that, learning about what seniors needed in the community and understanding. And then there was the COVID as well. And so we were kind of locked down with that, and I was living a pretty quiet life. But, you know, living the life, and you do what you can, and you have to support your family. I am a single mother, and I have to support my son in college. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cindelar?
Yes, for the people in the back, Brian Cindelar. I hear you.
Thank you.
As I stated previously, I am a past three-term councilman. So irrespective of the past two years, you know, I couldn't even tell you, four a month times 12 times six. So that's a lot of council meetings. Within the past two years, I put my energy towards other volunteer organizations that I was in. But I keep abreast of the minutes. They're easily accessible.
They're easily accessible. So, if, you know, the question is, what's your background as far as council? I think, you know, and I ran contested each time. I did it too. The first time I ran, I was the outsider. You know, and so I think I know what it takes to get it done and I know what the issues are in this city.
Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Gallagher?
Hi, yes. I have attended two council meetings probably in the last month. My whole reason for running is I shouldn't have to attend council meetings. Council meetings should come to me. I'm a Ward III resident and I want to know what's going on. So, I vow that if I am elected, I will inform every resident of Ward III what is happening on City Council. If every single person in Ward III went to a City Council meeting, there would not be enough room for that.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Hadman?
So, early in the pandemic, my mother, who I'm a servant caregiver, passed away from COVID and I had to say goodbye to her through the window. That was a very challenging experience for me. So, I went off the grid for six months to eight months. When I came out of that, I needed something to do with myself, to pour my energy into. And I realized that the proponents have been running for post for a while and I thought this is what I'm going to do. So, in February, I decided to run for City Council and I've attended every meeting, whether Zoom or in person, since that time, with the exception of one meeting where I was going to a training, the shared ground, and I sent my son to be my surrogate. He is 21 and he said he didn't think that anyone his age had been in that council room for a very long time. Yeah, so I have made a commitment to attending every meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have all the people who are rep. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Arabian Whitman. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have been attending the City Council meetings since the summer. So, every single one on a weekly basis. And it's been great to watch it again and to engage with what's going on. Because yes, when I was on City Council, I was going to every single meeting. But also, in addition to the City Council meetings, I attend all of the Civil Service Commission meetings because I am a member of Civil Service Commission for Rocky River, which helps with the selection from the lists that are provided to us as far as our safety service forces are considered. So, I am completely involved in the government of Rocky River. And as was indicated, all the information is available on the website, which I hope more people will utilize. You can see all the minutes there. You can see the agendas. You can see the ordinances that are so wonderful. They're very exciting. They're very exciting. That's why we have so many 21-year-olds attending our meetings. And it is very informative to read at least the agendas and the minutes and then attend, you can have a true appreciation. So, I invite all of you to please come.
Thank you. We'll let the incumbents confess how many City Council meetings they have attended this last two years. Mr. Hunt?
I don't know how to quantify that. I think I've missed maybe two or three in the last couple of years and for good reason. There's an inference here that incumbents shouldn't be qualified to remain in seats because they're not responsive. And I just would like to make sure that the residents of Ward One and those, some are in this audience as I look out, know that this councilman has been ultimately responsible and communicative with those residents. So, during the next number of council meetings I've been in, we have had a few teenagers that come from school credit. So, there are some under 21-year-olds. But the truth is that the meetings are sparsely attended. And so, when I hear people say they are not being responded to or there should be diversity in response, come to a council meeting, engage your councilperson, just as we would when we receive a phone call, an email, or a question. As the Councilman Brown referred in his opening statement, we do that every day, every week. I've been doing that for 15 years.
Thank you. I don't think anybody is accusing anyone here of not being serious about their commitment. So, just so you understand, that was not an accusation.
Understood.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yeah, thank you. Hey, I would echo many councilman's comments. Look, I'm approachable to the residents. I'm trying to be out there, trying to be engaged, trying to be involved. I'm in the community. I'm coaching my kids in sports, their school events. We're at parties in the park. We're giving pie out dog days of summer. Our council president would never let us not do a dog days of summer. We have to serve hot dogs in the park. So, we're out there. Look, this isn't, we're not trying to hide the ball here. If anybody's looking for me, all you have to do is go on our city website, Rocky River City Council website. My cell phone number is listed on that website. If anybody wants to get ahold of me, you can call me on my cell phone anyhow. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Morris?
Is it on? Yeah. Hi. I may have missed two or three meetings in the past two years and that goes for the planning and EPA meetings as well. Sadly, I've missed a lot of architectural review, which is a bummer because those are really cool. But they're at 5:00 and I just can't make it at 5:00. I would like to echo that I am available and lots of people reach out to me. And it makes me so happy to be able to help anyone and everyone who calls. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have a question here, which is a little more down to brass tacks. And that is, an important responsibility of City Council is working on the city's budget. An important part of the budget is for infrastructure. What is your knowledge and experience working with infrastructure? We start with the at-large candidates. So, Mr. Sinbalar is ready to answer. Go ahead, please.
So, I will quote the often-quoted mayor and also council president, Rand. It was sewer, sewer, sewers for years. And that's because there were mandates by EPA. We had issues. I'm sure some people living in certain neighborhoods know those issues. So, when it comes down to that, those are things we call the creed, regardless of race, gender, gender identity, politic, political party, whatever, is are we maintaining the city services and the infrastructure that our city needs to keep a high standard of excellence? Therefore, keeping higher property values and maintaining the wonderful residents we have? It's that way. And the mayor and her wonderful administration put together this budget. Some of it's a major wish list, some of it's the mundane. I read ordinances for toilet paper and things of that nature. So, it's all, it's everything you can imagine a business to be. The only issue between the city and a business, though, is we have limited funding, right? It is what it is. We have a tax base, right? And the only way of changing that is going up, which a lot of people clearly don't like. Okay? Or you have to manage it. So, the mayor and her team do a good job of putting a great binder together that we reviewed every year, right? Right before the holidays. And we got it ready for the next year. And she does a great job with her administration of presenting that to us. And it's council's job to control that, the purse rates. And are we going to give that money to? So, we do our due diligence to investigate that budget.
Thank you, Mr. Sinbalar. Okay, how about Ms. Morris? Your experience with infrastructure?
Is this on again? Okay. So, before I came to council, I don't think I had much experience with infrastructure. But since I've been on council, that's pretty much what we do every week. And I've learned a lot. It's been my responsibility to have oversight of the senior center. And so, I've gotten to learn how that budget is put forth and to also have, to review the past and the present and the future in the budget for the senior center. I have to echo what Brian said. The mayor really does a great job of giving us things that we can root for because she really puts in, and she's very responsible and has professional people working with her to make sure that our budgets are realistic and that we can provide the excellence of service that we are very, very accustomed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
Christina Morris, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
Hello, yes. I would say that as a single woman managing two homes, as I was doing for a while, is what has taught me about infrastructure. So, I would be very interested in learning a lot more as I understand the mayor is pretty much in charge of these things and then they counsel decides whether or not to fund it. It's not easy. Currently, I have a gentleman painting my barn and I'm going to redo my bathroom. And you may say, well, that doesn't help. But that's kind of what we need, citizens that are doing things themselves so they can understand what the city has to do and we have to manage our budget. I think, I had a bad experience myself with the plumbing down my street. And I am thinking right now about the sidewalks that are going in because I'm not sure that everyone understands that they actually have to pay for those sidewalks when that comes in. And I'm thinking about seniors that are on a budget that are going to find out and hoping we might find some aid for them. And also, a person like myself who will have to plan that into my budget. And I would be there for those folks and educating them about what's coming up, even though it may not be till next year. I think they should know and possibly letters. I know people who are having it done are getting the letters, but people who may be getting it done in the future should be told as soon as possible. Thank you. I'm Katie Timmons.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. And Ms. Shranzrean?
Thank you. I've been manufacturing consumer products for 30 years, managing budgets anywhere from startup companies to $450 million companies. So, managing the sales, the budgets. Infrastructure, when it comes to the city, I call it the five S's. And that is sewers, streets, sidewalks, safety, and service. So, I feel that I'm very versed in being able to look at budgets, manage budgets. And I am constantly looking for efficiencies and removing found waste. So, I'm key on finding those pain points. I'm also looking at gathering feedback from internal and external, whether it be via surveys or focus groups or social media. Time is money in my world. So, I am constantly looking for those types of efficiencies in a budget. Thank you, Stacy Shranzrean.
Thank you. And Ms. Arabian Whitman?
Thank you. I am very familiar with the infrastructure of Rocky River and serving on the City Council in the past, there are a lot of professional opinions and expertise that go into the infrastructure. That includes our engineering firm that works with the city of Rocky River. They do exhaustive studies to make sure that we're looking at what is needed, what is not needed, and how we are going to make estimates on how we're going to pay for what is actually needed for what you don't see underneath the roads. We also need to make sure that the efforts continue, that we're using state funding, that we're using any federal funding that's available. There's also, if you didn't know, there's water lines that are going into our, into our community, but they're actually paid for by the city of Cleveland. So, there's a lot of stakeholders that go into the infrastructure as far as decision-making is concerned. So, nothing is made as far as decision by one person. And instead, it requires the expertise of many. In fact, the Safety Service Director attends every single City Council meeting because that's how important that topic is. So, yes, I understand infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt? What's your experience?
Thank you. In my time on council, I have been lucky enough to assist the city administration with many infrastructure projects. And it's been touched on by some of the other answers. But the object is to be looking out for three to five years. And the mayor and her team are very good at identifying what infrastructure project needs to be tackled. We engage the city engineer. We engage the city Cleveland Water Department. And we like to do these projects kind of as a marriage. There's no reason to resurface a road only to find out two years or a year later that the sewers underneath that road need to be repaired or the water line needs to be repaired. So, studies are done, televising if sewers are done in certain areas that are high priority. Those projects are then engineered. And the city is in such a good financial state that, you know, having the second highest Moody's rating, we're able to leverage outside funding with our own spending to get these projects done. So, it's one of the nice things to be able to do when residents call us and complain about the street. We can get it taken care of.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you. Thank you. So, I've been on City Council for 10 years. We've been doing infrastructure projects. Brian said to cry for the mayor to be in sewer, sewer, sewers. I know a lot about them, particularly in the last four years. As the chairman of the Finance Committee, we've been through this. If anybody's been down to Morewood Parkway recently, it's all torn up. There's a major, a significant multimillion-dollar infrastructure project going on down there right now. But it was touched on a little bit earlier and I think the key to the projects is to leverage our own dollars, right? So, if the project's going to cost so much, you can do a lot more if you can get state funds or county funds, right? And dollars go further, then you can do another infrastructure project. And I think that's really the key. And you heard also the notion of the city of Cleveland. We touched on, the city of Cleveland pays to redo our water lines. So, if you think about that, it may not mean a whole lot to you. Over the last six or eight years, that's, I don't know if it's a billion dollars, but it's multimillion dollars. That is millions and millions of dollars that the city of Cleveland has paid for, that the city of Rocky River and your tax dollars have not had to pay for, yet we've had the benefit of. So, I think the trick with the infrastructure projects is to make sure they come in on time, use the engineering estimate, make sure they come in on time and on budget, and to leverage our dollars with other dollars so we can do additional projects and make the money go further. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher?
Well, currently, I am in charge of our court's budget, personal and facilities budget. I'm active on many public works projects. I'm a liaison. I'm also a member of the Planning Commission for a new justice center. Infrastructure is very important. I understand the Hillary Road Bridge is going to be rebuilt. So, we need to start planning for that. But I would like to engage the community on their, any future projects that we might have in our city.
Thank you. And Ms. Hadman?
Well, obviously, infrastructure is my wheelhouse. I'm a bachelor's and a master's in civil engineering from East Western Reserve University. And I've already assisted some of our neighbors in Ward One who had some confusion about the sidewalk replacement program, which, incidentally, the minutes are online, but the agendas and the ordinances are not, which would help clear up some of that in communication. I've inspected concrete pores at the summer job. I spent 20 years doing redevelopment and redevelopment projects, Flats East, Islamic Village. You can see some of our work. I've been posting pictures of it on LisaHadman.com and you can see some of our projects. I'm very knowledgeable in managing all of the aspects of our infrastructure projects. And yeah, I guess that's about it. And I'm ventured to say that I am definitely more familiar with infrastructure projects than any of the attorneys on our City Council. And evidence is the fact that they thought that some of the projects could be finished on time. Because if you've ever been in construction, you know that they don't finish on time.
Very good. Thank you. This has been a lot of fun, hasn't it? You've all been so attentive and... We appreciate it. All the members of the audience are taking your responsibility very seriously to inform voters. So, I want to thank you all again for coming and I want to thank all the candidates who have participated and given thoughtful answers. Now, you may remain if you wish and meet the uncontested candidates as well as to ask individual questions of the others.